Okay, we're gonna call the orders of the city council special meeting. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings? Councilmember Canes?
Here.
Councilmember Miller?
They'll be all coming in in five minutes.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. I invite everyone in the audience and the council to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We did that. Public comments for items that's on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? I meant to say that we need to have the approval of the agenda first.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Oh, I thought you pressed.
I seconded.
Yeah.
No, I made the motion.
You made the motion.
She seconded it.
I apologize, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now, public comment for any item that's on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. If there's anyone that wants to speak about something that's on the agenda, please step to the microphone to be heard. No one? Anything about it?
Some of us are here just to find out about item number B or item B. That's all.
Okay.
We just want to know what it's about.
Oh, okay. No one else? Then we'll go right into our action requests for consideration and approval. First up is to accept the resignation of the city administrator.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the acceptance of the resignation of the city administrator.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is the resurfacing of Glenwood. Who would like to introduce that?
I'll introduce it. We have the opportunity to combine work here to be able to get a discount on this project as using part of our paving bond that we have and part of local road money to be able to combine this and get a great cost savings. Funding of Glenwood is currently in the eligible list of roads under the 2020 paving bond. The section of Glenwood from Bloomfield to Sunset is not included in that, so that's why there's two separate pieces there. There's a breakout on page three of your packet that shows the costs that are there. And down almost to the middle, there's a breakout of the total estimated cost to the paving bond issue would be $40,250 and to the local and major road fund would be $56,000. And then Giffords Webster, Scott Ringler, took estimates from the current contract that we have for work that is being done. So I don't want you to think that that attachment that's at the back of it is the actual cost. He just pulled the cost from the cold mill, HMA surface, two to four inches, is $3.80 per square yard. And the hand, did I grab the right one? The hand patching, yes, is $195 for the ton to be able to do that. So they estimate that on Glenwood, it's gonna take 37 ton of hand patching at $7,215 and the cold mill will be 320 square yards at $1,216 for a total of 8,431. The total estimated cost savings is $4,065 that we're looking at by combining this project with current projects that are out there. So that's where we come up, the estimated cost to resurface Glenwood from Santa Barbara to Bloomfield for 575 feet times $70 per lineal foot is $40,250. The same being said, the same type of breakdown that is there, hand patching is 51 tons, $9,945. Cold milling is $1,687 for a total of $11,632. Again, the cost savings is $5,614. So they're looking at doing from on Glenwood from Santa Barbara to Bloomfield, 800 feet at $70 of per lineal foot at $56,000. So if the city council wishes to move forward, they would just like you to give approval so that Allied can continue work on Wednesday of this week on the 14th and get that taken care of to make sure that it still fits in with their paving crews.
Yeah, I think the, am I echoing again? Is there something wrong with my mic? Okay. Yeah, I think, looks like I'm very myself talk.
You know, you sound very muffled, like more than just your mask.
Anyhow, I'll deal with it. I'll plod on through. I think the other thing, the key thing is the savings is because if we were to do this next year, basically the asphalt that we would be paying for this year is gonna get
Torn up.
Torn up and thrown out as well as the cost for the cold milling. So by bringing it into this year's project, not only do we get the rates from this year, but we're also saving over having to do it again next year and wasting all the effort that we've done. Yeah, so if we, I'm not explaining this well. If we, because of the water main that's been done, we have to fill that.
The trenching.
And so the issue is, is if we then resurface next year, we're pulling out that asphalt that we just put in to do the whole wide resurface. So it's a waste of money as well as cold milling, so.
Can you explain hand patching and cold milling? Because our road is pretty much destroyed, so I don't know what does this look like?
Hand patching is what they do when they fill the trench.
There is no trench. We have bumps. There's no trench.
Right. Where the line went in, they called, where they fixed that, it's called hand patching. It's done by hand as opposed to a big machine where they mill off the top two or three inches and replace.
And then they would put the two-inch surface down on top of that. The other thing I forgot to mention is that this will not include ditches. It says here, no driveways, culverts, ditching, and very little restoration because of the type of work that they're doing.
So is this the same type of paving that would have been done when we were on the list to be paved last year?
Wow, I think it's too much of a.
Yeah. And I think the difference is, the reason you weren't on last year, you were added there, but the reason you were taken off is because the water main was not put in at that time, so it did not make sense.
I understand that I'm asking. Is this the same process we would have gotten? Or is this just a patch it up kind of a thing?
It'll be a complete road that is there. You just won't have the driveways and the ditches done at the same time like has been completed.
Okay. And then very little restoration. There's been quite a bit of damage done to people's property along the whole street. Who's going to be responsible for that, then?
Well, that restoration is part of the water main project, so that restoration will take place. This is just the road itself.
Yeah, so they won't be doing culverts or, you know, pulling up driveways, so that's not.
Unless they damage, if they damage a driveway, then they will address that. But that is not part of the project that they are going to go out and remove driveways or driveway approaches.
Right. But the point I was making is that's where a lot of the damage usually takes place is when you're doing the driveways.
Correct.
As well as the culverts and so forth. And that's not happening, so there shouldn't be a whole lot of damage. So that's why I think he has minimal restoration listed in there.
So before we finish with the conversation, we need to have a motion on the floor.
Is there a suggested one or? I'll make a motion to add Glenwood to this summer's paving project. Do we need an amount not to exceed, Scott, or?
I would include an amount not to, well, these aren't.
They're estimated costs.
These are estimated amounts. So it's gonna be hard to put an amount not to exceed. But yeah, I would authorize, including the motion authorization for someone on behalf of the city to enter into this agreement for a change of record order.
Okay, so make a motion to authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Giffords Webster and Allied to add Glenwood to the 2023 paving program.
Is there a second?
Yeah, that's good.
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second now. Further discussions?
Yeah, these are, oh, sorry. These are dated June 8th and June 9th. Why didn't we receive this information prior to right now?
I was out of the office sick on Friday.
Okay, so you're showing us what the savings is gonna be. What is the actual cost going to be?
That is the cost that is there. Total estimated cost to the paving bond is $40,250 and $56,000.
And then what's this?
That's just the estimate where he pulled that information from. So on page four, underneath demolition, you'll see cold mill, it's the fourth item down. It just gives you the pricing, what your pricing will be per square foot. And then all the way down to the hot mix asphalt pavement, the hand patching patch is $195 per ton. That's where he pulled those numbers from to give you the estimate of what the cost would be. So he just included that as an example of where those numbers came from to give you. That is not the cost of this project.
So part of it, the reason why it's broken into two sections, the $40,000 will be covered under the existing road mill, the extra funds that we have. And then the $56,000 was never, that section was never eligible under the.
The bond.
The road bond. So that has to come out of the local road fund, of which we have about a little over $700,000 in the local road fund.
And this example that's in there is from the Glenwood and San Diego Road resurfacing water main trench program.
So the $356,000, $348 is for Glenwood and?
For the water main trench, yes, for that portion.
They just took these numbers here.
Just pulled that out and $50-some thousand.
That's where he got this, to be able to do.
And then where are the management costs and stuff? Is that included in this amount?
I don't have that. This is just for the paving.
Okay, so it does look like they're getting some landscape restoration, watering soden seed and mulch, but that will fall only on the one side of the road?
No, don't look at that. That's an example. That is from a different project where he pulled.
Correct, but it's still Glenwood.
Right, but that's from the water main trench.
Correct.
Yep, so they are getting, and that's what I stated earlier, is that wherever they touched for the water main project, they will be providing restoration to that.
And that's what I'm saying. So one half of the road where it was trenched will get all of this, but the other half will not.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
If the road was not, or it was not damaged, that's what part of the cost savings is.
The road, entire road is pretty much damaged. So I don't know who's been out to look at it. Perhaps some of the Glenwood residents would like to. And is there a way to estimate into this some landscape restoration?
There is some, just not to the same extent that we have for the rate of road bond because they're not gonna be doing the things like the culverts and the driveway cutouts that tend to cause a lot of damage, so.
They'll get minor, they'll get minor.
Correct.
Well, it does say here that there will be landscape restoration one side or one foot each side of road. And that's part of the water main.
All right, that's important for the people especially who live there, so. Is there an opportunity for them to ask any questions?
Not until we get to that point. So this has to be approved or shot down. Any other questions?
Is this, is this a deadline? Is there a deadline to this?
By Wednesday? By tomorrow?
We don't like making these kinds of decisions or spur the moment without adequate information.
I think because Allied is wrapping up their paving program right now, that is why you're getting that opportunity to participate in that cost savings. If you don't do that, then next year you will have to rebid it out and it'll cost more.
I guess question, there was a whole lot of damage done to the road by Sunday when they tore up and did the trench for the water main. Since they're our contractors, who is responsible when something like that happens, when damage is done by a contractor?
The contractor is. They have to come out and fix that. So that is part of their work that they need to do for restoration.
But who also is, who would the residents, who would the residents tell the damage to? And who would follow up to make sure that that restoration was done?
They can send it to CIP, whatever that address is, Lathir Village. Suzie follows up with that. Scott Ringler follows up with that. I follow up with that.
So, and then what would be the turnaround time in following up if somebody sends a restoration request to that email address?
Usually somebody reaches out to them within a day or two to schedule that and get that taken care of.
And when is this work supposed to be done?
Wednesday.
No, this is when it has to be, it'll start on Wednesday?
It'll start on Thursday.
And so it'll be completed by when?
I don't know that he has that in here.
When is it normally completed?
Allied is probably gonna be out of here in a month, less than, a month or less.
Okay, so.
Depending on the amount of work that they have to do with that, which it doesn't sound like it is a whole lot that they're doing to prep that. And I don't want to speak for them because I do not do that kind of construction, but I would say that they would have that wrapped up within a week's time.
So, and I'm doing, saying this from experience because no one's followed up with me and my property did get damaged. So between whoever's gonna be the city manager within a month, if someone sends something to that email address, the expectation is to at least somebody, whoever wants to take it, look at the meeting later on and figure out who it's gonna be. But somebody has to follow up within 24 hours of whoever sends the email because, I mean.
And that email does not come to me on the.
I get that it doesn't come to you, but the buck stops with the city manager.
I get that.
But, so I'm just saying that I know for fact that no one followed up with me. And so since you have residents here now that are gonna be affected, I just want to put it on notice that the expectation, I keep looking at you because I'm assuming that you might fall into place, that the expectation is somebody, Suzie, Pam, Kelda, you, somebody will follow up with them.
It goes to Suzie and it goes to Scott Ringler. It goes to DPS. They are the ones that are supposed to be taking care of that and they do reach out. I wish you would have let me know that nobody had reached out to you.
I did. So that's what, yeah, I did. Going forward 24 hours, within the time you get an email, a response of, got it? When's it gonna be restored? Or what's, you know, what's not gonna happen? And then if you could CC me on it to make sure that it gets, I'm sorry, I keep looking because I just don't know where we're going.
I was gonna ask a question, though. Do you want me to go up there? What kind of restoration are you talking about? Are you talking about the seeding and the dirt on the side of the road, things like that, for the grass and that?
First, I just want someone to respond to say that you received it.
Right, I get that.
That's the first one. And then to determine, because I can't tell you what the email could be. So whatever that email is, to see whether or not, to follow up to make sure that it gets done. And if it can't get done, to give a response of why it can't.
Because a lot of times on the restoration, it takes at least two to three months because we have to let the ground settle, if they have to bring in more dirt, things like that. And everybody I know wants their restoration done today, or the work was done yesterday. Well, then the next day we want their restoration done. We have to let the ground settle and DPS usually does the restoration, but they have to let that ground settle because if not, it's just gonna sink. They gotta come back again. They gotta redo everything again. And so it's usually about two to three months that settling has to do. That's why a lot of times when things are done in November, we don't restore until the spring, when we can, after the frost laws lift and everything like that, then we have to go out and restore it that time. I just want residents to know that, that it's not a next day restoration for the grass and things like that, so.
It's just where, I don't want the ball to drop if someone sends something and even if it is gonna take two or three months just to be able to say.
Just to answer that question, and I understand that. And that's what I, why I was asking, that if that's the kind of restoration that you were talking about, or, I mean, I don't know what other kind of restoration there would be other than the grass and the seeding and the things like that.
There's sprinkler system restoration.
There's another thing that comes with sprinkling systems and that, yes. And we are replacing those right now because I'm getting a lot of those coming in for them, so.
Yeah, so it sounds like.
They're going out and getting the parts for them. They're coming in a lot, so I have seen those coming in lately, so. That's all I wanted to.
Just so you know, the work on Glenwood would coincide with when the trench repair was tentatively scheduled, and that's for the week of the 26th.
All right, so we do.
So it is not the 17th or 14th of this week. They need to know by this week so they can make preparations for that and get the materials ordered. But they would be doing it the week of June 26th, which is when they had originally scheduled to do the trench repair.
So then Glenwood residents still have an opportunity to send things to that SIP address?
And that address is CIProjects@LathirVillage.org, just so we all will know what that address, the email address is.
And we can send photos and videos and all that kind of stuff, right?
I would say send everything and then because of our transition that's going on, I would encourage everyone to make sure you CC me on your email to make sure that it's followed up on. Anything else? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miller?
I'm really hesitant about this because I really don't know what we're getting here. But we can't live like we are. So I'll vote yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, public comment, and so before three minutes, please, just you can say your name.
I'll try to be really quick. I just really like the way you guys are putting more stuff in the newsletter. Like it said that the trench repair was coming, and that's really nice. And I agree with, I'm not sure who it is, but anyway, how she talked about how we have to think about when the restoration can be done. A lot of people have been complaining. They were complaining last fall. I don't think people understand how grass grows. I don't think they understand how land sinks. So I think it would be nice if you could put some little blurb in that newsletter that says, you know, grass seed only germinates at this temperature, you know, and land has to settle before seed, before, you know, better topsoil and sand and seed can be put on. You know, people, people are having all kinds of complaints and being unreasonable because they don't understand the process of restoration. And, you know, I'm a gardener, I get it. You know, people complain to me and I say, well, you can't have, you can't have it restored in November. Sorry, it's too late. Or you can't have it done in March, it's too early. Because a lot of people just don't get it. So I think being simple and complete would be helpful because it has really helped me to see more stuff coming in the newsletter. And it makes a lot of sense to me that we're just gonna pave the whole thing now instead of doing a patch and then paving next year. But my other concern is just, can you let me know what's happening with culverts and that sort of stuff? Like when is that happening on Glenwood? So I just like to be ready to think about what I need to move in terms of my plants, things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name is Julie Crego. I live at the corner of Bloomfield and Glenwood. And I don't know if I understand exactly how the road's gonna be patched, but the entire road was damaged by heavy machinery. The integrity of Glenwood was questionable before this project started. And the other side of the road, opposite the water trench, is crumbling. We had a lot of trees damaged that we've now had to trim ourselves. Our driveway, you know, the little portion that leads from the road to the driveway, you can tell trucks backed up in there. It's completely crumpled. So my question, and they dug through my tree lawn into my yard. So if they're only going to repair a foot into the tree lawn and not even touch the road, I mean, that doesn't even begin to solve the problems of Glenwood. So there were already several layers of, you could tell, repairs over the years. So unless the whole thing is scraped down, like some of the other roads have been, patching that little strip where the water main was, where the water pipes were replaced, it's gonna do nothing. And it's just gonna keep crumbling, narrowing, disintegrating, and you're gonna have a big problem on your hands. But something needs to happen because it's just, it's a dust storm every time a vehicle drives down there. My entire front yard, bushes, house, covered in dust. So I would really appreciate something getting done, but I don't know that putting a Band-Aid on it is gonna really accomplish anything.
Thank you. Can I just answer that real quick, or do you want me to wait?
I'm not afraid of waiting, but if you would like to go ahead now. But you don't have your microphone on either.
Just so that you know, what they're planning to do is a mill and overlay. So they'll mill that down, which is actually removing a portion of that surface and then put a two-inch overlay on the entire street, not just where. Yeah, on the entire street.
And what about the crumbling edges? The edges are just a mess. What happens with that?
They will be addressing that at the same time. Again, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know the exact procedure they use to do that, but they will be addressing that.
Can we send questions then to Scott Ringler?
I prefer if you send it to the CI Projects.
Well, I have sent things before.
That's what I'm also asking you to CC me on it, only so I can start also following and start making a list for it. And CC Scott on there. You, I meant wanting to give it to you.
Lauren Berus, resident. Just to go with the landscaping thing, too, our restoration happened and, well, the land, our front yard got all dug up for the gas lines and then the water lines and the ground had to settle. It was in October and it didn't get settled until just recently, and it's fine. It's great. Everything, the roads, great. It just took time, so we didn't have any problem with that. And I know there's a lot of concern about that, but my really, my big concern today is that the city administrator is resigning and it seemed to be like a very quick thing and it seems like a really big deal. And I don't know if the city administrator wanted to talk about why she was leaving, when her last day was, but as residents, we're like, just, we don't know what's going on. So I wanted to give you the opportunity to do that if you wanted to do that. And also for Bruce or Kelly, what happens when we're without a city administrator and who does that work? I mean, is Pam going to be, is it just going to be considered that she just does this extra work again and then the staff is like way overloaded like that again? and then the staff is like way overloaded like that again? And we start losing more people because I know we lost the code enforcer just recently too. And do we ever promote from within the current staff? I know these are a lot of questions, but comments, but I'm left with a lot of questions with the resignation and how quickly that went by without any comment.
What I suggested to, thank you, what I suggested to the council is that we go and get a interim, interim city manager, someone from the outside. I provided everybody, I think everybody got the list of interim city managers that are available now. And I think that's something that we have to discuss and I'll let Sue finish the rest. But her last day is not officially until July 8th. I think that the next meeting, which is July 26th, the council, is that July? I'm in July because I want this month to be over, yes, so June 26th. It does need to be a discussion of what we want to do next because I have my own thoughts with doing, you gotta do something different. I prefer, I'll give my, my two cents is that we get an interim manager from outside who can do it temporarily. So we can do a search calmly, intently and just kinda make sure that we're not feeling rushed. Do you want to say anything else?
Just that my last day is July 8th, which is a Saturday, so officially my last workday is July 7th. And I really appreciate the staff that I work with. They give their all to this city. Even if it is not fully appreciated, they give their all to this city. And they deserve their 3% raises, they deserve training. And whatever you put into your staff is what you get out of your staff. And I just think it's sad that it's not recognized. So it caused me to pause and to reflect on where I'm at. And I just can't continue to serve in a toxic community or a toxic council.
So I'll stop there because it's not a toxic council. And I'm really sad that you would say that. I know we had our disagreements. But I'll just say it's not a toxic council.
Well, I'm really sad when a problem arises and it doesn't get addressed with a council member. And I will leave it at that.
So, um, thank you. Okay. So is there anyone else that wants to say anything?
You know, I'm gonna go on a little positive note. I wanted to say, Nancy Griffin, and I had my little road paved and I didn't even expect it. So that was a tree. And I, to you, I want to say they did a beautiful job. I had someone getting me a quote on my driveway and when he realized how deep they were doing this street, he said, that's fantastic, it's great, it looks beautiful. All the crumbling stuff that was in my lawn is now clear, beautiful, wonderful. So hopefully you have the same experience because I am so excited because I'm, I'm the only house on Rainbow Drive where I live. My neighbors are both on different streets. And I didn't think I was getting a new road because no one ever drives down there and I got a new road and I'm very excited. So I just wanted to say that. And honestly, I feel like the council is kind of working nicely together, like just lately, a little bit more, I'm seeing more positive. So that's where I am. I just wanted to give you a little praise.
I appreciate it. If everybody worked together well, then something's not quite right, you know? Just have to have some disagreements, but, anyone else? Alright, so then we'll move to Mary, council comments. And my brain is going too fast, so I am going to not say anything for this. Oh, we're gonna have a garage sale. Help me with the date, I think that's the 23rd. The weekend.
23rd, 24th, 25th.
Yes, and so please spread the word for that. I will be sending a news, newsletter, but a press release to, um, Southwood Sun, thank you, Southwood Sun, and I'll try to put it on Craigslist unless someone else feels like they want to. I'm free to do that. And that's all I have. Council, comments?
I just want comment, this is gonna drive me crazy. Comment for Julie, you know, you mentioned that there was, there was other damage that wasn't within the one-foot margin. If you have that, take pictures of it, send the email to CI Projects because the contractor is still responsible for that. The restoration we're talking about is, you know, how far, how far from the roadwork are they gonna go in? But if they damage something, they're responsible for it, they will fix it. So, so make sure you do that. Just wanted to, you know, I, I know Sue's leaving, so I just wanted to ask a couple of things. As one, if maybe, you know, I know you've only got a month, month left. If we could do something to kind of kick off the back billing process, I know we've been putting that off for other things like the budget and so forth. But, you know, with you leaving and then waiting for an interim, again, that's just gonna be two, three more months of delay. And, you know, we approved the collection of essentially $130,000 16, 17 months ago and we still haven't done it. So I want to make sure that that gets, if we can, can get that started before you leave. And then I just wanted to also ask, you know, for an update on the water tech project as well as the saquemeeter update, if there's any updates since the last time we talked about that.
Not on the Saqua water meter. And the tech update has just been staff, you know, and having staff out of the office. Most of May, there were three of us working downstairs because we had one person off for three weeks, more than three weeks dealing with a family issue. We had other people that were out sick, others that were out for training during that time. And it's not, for a lack of wanting to do that, you just, you can't do more than what you can do.
Are you talking about the water billing or the water tech?
Both, both of those things. So trying to address that. And we do have Martha who is fitting in very, very well with us now, very knowledgeable, very pleasant, doing a great job down there. So that is something that we hope to be able to transition and to be able to get that up and going.
One little bit of confusion now, the water, the water tech piece is through Ferguson?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about something else. No, I'm waiting to hear back on the tower stuff. We don't own the towers, so I'm waiting to hear back from the tower owner. We own the land, just not the towers.
And on both of the leases allow us to use the tower for this kind of purpose. I know they have to let us lease, contractually anyways.
But they're, they're trying to, yeah, I will work on that. Do you want to give a new date for the water billing?
Well, just by her last day, I'd like to see the process at least kicked off.
So it was the day?
July, what'd you say, July?
7th is the Friday.
So by July 7th. And that's all I have.
I'll go real quick. Just to reiterate, the Juneteenth event is coming up this Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. And then also I just wanted to confirm, Sue, you'll be, you're still going over the budget, right, for in the next meeting?
That is my intention unless I'm wrong otherwise.
I was just making sure, I was just confirming. Okay. I just wanted to confirm. That's all I have.
I'll go next. There was a really nice article about the upcoming Lathir Village home and garden, or garden tour. I'm sorry, not home, garden tour. And I encourage anybody who has an opportunity to read it and hopefully you'll show up to the garage sales and to the tour. They're the same day, Saturday, the 24th.
How'd that happen? How'd that happen?
I, you know, that, that falls on me because I just saw that there was complaints that the garage sale was not, the original one was not advertised. And so it was asked to, and so I just wrapped it in. I apologize, so.
I just have a couple of things. I agree with Catherine that having that information is very helpful. And when they came door to door to let us know what was going on, I appreciated that. But there are some people that have very legitimate concerns that have been going on for a year, two years. So those are a lot of the people that are complaining and it's not about, you know, land settling and grass growing. There's legitimate things that have not been addressed. And I'm not sure if Nancy, if you were this past year or last year with the old asphalt company or the new asphalt company, because I've definitely seen a difference in, in the work between those two companies also. So hopefully the work that's being done now will be, you know, better and there'll be more follow-up and they'll take care of the, the damage that they've done. And then I was just wondering about the MML guarantee?
So from the meeting that we had in '22, '21, it said that we had a two-year guarantee. But when I talked to Erin from MML and what she sent back as a contract, we have a one-year guarantee. But we are still within that one-year guarantee. And it is where, I forgot the exact thing is that.
The contract started July 1st. If it ends July 8th, does that impact?
So because she gave her notice beforehand, we fall, we still fall underneath that one year. And so she said that, I guess I should have told all of it to you, that this stipulates that in the event that the incumbent voluntarily vacates a position, within a year of placement, the league will offer another search without, with, excuse me, with direct advertising costs being the only cost to the community. And since Sue's contract was signed on July 27th, 2022, you are within that one-year scope. And then she's supposed to follow up with me and I think Scott's around, Scott is on that one also, but she's gonna follow up with me and that's what she provided, the Michigan Municipal Executives Organizations for the interim manager listing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Not that it matters, but didn't, didn't we, didn't we, and we did the service, didn't we do the enhanced services? I swear that, I swear we did that.
I thought we talked about it, but.
The motion was for the enhanced based on the pamphlet. However, there is no, there is no signed agreement. So Pam has reached out to Joyce for the actual signed agreement.
She sent the signed agreement. It's in the email that I sent.
She sent it to you?
Yeah, it's within that email.
I didn't see the actual.
I sent it to you. It says one year that we signed.
Yeah, because the enhanced has the two-year.
Because the enhanced was that, and the price, the price point was for the, I mean, I guess it's kind of a moot point. Right, exactly. I was just, but I agree with you. I think my recollection was that the city had, had opted for the enhanced with the additional community meetings and as a part of that, it came with a two-year guarantee.
I mean, I don't know where.
Because the community engagement was a, was a prime focus of the last search and so that's why.
Right.
Well, I will, for the actual signed proposal, because the one that we signed, I hate doing this off my phone, but.
I didn't see the attachment.
Yeah, it's an attachment in there and it is not.
Not attached.
You see it?
I have your response but no attachment. Will you even send it?
I will send it to you all, but it's a.
But we're, we're covered in some way.
Yeah, it's not two years though. We're covered, bottom. Yes, we're covered.
Thank you.
But I'll send it to you. Does anyone else have anything?
I was just gonna say one more thing. Is it possible to get like, maybe like a CIP flyer in the e-newsletter or something like that? Just like a blurb about the CIP, like just make people, I, I can't recall seeing it in the e-newsletter. I'm pretty sure it's in there, but.
The CIP or the email address?
The email address, like just something.
Yeah, I, I think it is there, but we'll, we'll see if they can enhance it.
Anything else? Barb, did you have something? I mentioned it.
Oh, what else did I?
Oh, no, you said it, I'm confused.
Yeah, I said it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, hearing none, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
You're adjourned.